All right, good morning. I'm going to, first, I'm going to ask you, before we get started here, would you all please silence your cellphones? Just out of respect for everyone. And we will call to order the Washoe County Board of Commissioners' meeting for October 15th, 2019. I will do an introduction in just a moment, but we will start with a salute to the flag. Ms. Reagan-Gype, would you lead us this morning in a salute? Our flag is right over here.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done. Thank you so much. So, you'll notice that I have three very astute young ladies here. We'll be talking about why they're here in just a moment, but I will introduce them just as soon as the clerk takes roll, and then I will tell you who we have. Madam Clerk, would you call roll?
Yes, sir. Von Hartung Chair.
Here.
Bob Lucy Vice Chair.
Here.
Marcia Burke Biddler.
Here.
Kitty Jung.
Present.
Jeanne Herman.
Here.
Interim County Manager David Solero.
Here.
And Nate Edwards, Assistant District Attorney.
Here.
Or Deputy.
Okay. So, the reason I have these young ladies here is they got together and we were able to do something in their community. We got some speed bumps done in their community. In a few minutes, when we have Commissioners' announcements, I'm going to thank the real people who made this happen, who is staff, because they're the ones who really got after this. I mean, I assisted, but staff is the, they're the true heroes here. So, on my left, I have Reagan-Gype. On my right, I have Reese-Gype. And on my other left, the far left, I have Riley-Gype. Okay? So, welcome, ladies. Mr. Manager, new employee introduction.
Mr. Chair, that takes us to item number three, which is new employee introduction. So, if we can go down front, we'll have the employees come up, introduce themselves. They will give us their name and the department they work for. Appreciate that.
Okay. You guys want to come? Come on. You can come down. We're going to go this way, or this way, either way? Okay?
My name is Megan, and I work for the Health Department in the CCHS Division.
I work, Beth Parrish, I work in the Clerk's office.
My name is Christina Moreno, and I work at Animal Services.
Hi, my name is Leslie Corona, and I also work for Animal Services.
Hello, my name is Harley Mon, and I work in the Assessors' Office.
Good morning, my name is Kristy Hubbard. I'm a Human Resources Specialist, specifically in the Recruitment Team.
Good morning, my name is Wendy Altamire. I am in the Health Department, Immunizations.
My name is Marvelous Grant. I work in Washoe County Sheriff's Office Dispatch.
Good morning, my name is Tajah Carmina. I'm also a dispatcher.
Good morning, my name's Andrea, and I work for Reno Justice Court.
And I'm Myra Deanda, and I work for the District Attorney's Office in the Family Support Division.
Okay. Thank you. Full firestarter.
She and Mason could just run the show for us.
It'd be a show. There we go. Good. Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, that'll take us to item number four, our Presentation of Certificates. As you're all aware, Washoe County encourages lifelong learning and professional development of all employees. Program administered by our Human Resources Department, The Excellence in Public Service, is a series of certificate programs designed to support employee development and performance. The completion of these courses over a two-year period demonstrates the employee's commitment to continuous, excuse me, personal and professional improvement, and to Washoe County's journey to excellence. So, with that, I would like to present the first certificate to Robert Andrews, Account Manager in the Comptroller's Office, who has completed the Essentials of SAP for Financial Staff Certificate Program. Mr. Andrews.
Congratulations.
Next, we'll move on to Irene Dominguez, Account Clerk Three, or Two, for the Sheriff's Office, who has completed the Essentials of SAP for Financial Staff Certificate Program.
Congratulations.
Next, we'll move on to Irene Dominguez, Account Clerk Three, or Two, for the Sheriff's Office, who has completed the Essentials of SAP for Financial Staff Certificate Program. Jessica Harrow is Legal Assistant, or Legal Secretary for the Public Dependents' Office, and has completed the Essentials of Personal Effectiveness Certificate Program. Nicole Klitschke is an Administrative Assistant Two at the Public Administrator's Office, who has completed the Essentials of SAP for HR Reps Certificate Program. Robin Posniak is a Library Assistant One for the Library, and has completed the Promote Yourself Mini Certificate Program. Catherine Salim, with the Election Specialist for the Register of Voters, has completed the Promote Yourself Mini Certificate Program as well. And finally, today, we have Edwin Smith, Administrative Secretary for the Comptroller's Office, who has completed the Essentials of SAP for HR Reps Certificate Program.
Congratulations. Okay. Well done, Mr. Manager.
All right. Mr. Chair, item number five is public comment. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Commission Agenda. The Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the Commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, would you call public comment?
Of course. First up, we have Ms. Sarah Schmitz, followed by Mr. Mike Hess.
Good morning, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Sarah Schmitz from Incline Village. As an unincorporated community, we rely upon IVGID to provide water, sewer, trash, and recreational services. We depend on the county and this Board to provide us with vital government resources. We pay a significant amount of property taxes and fees for these essential resources. In fact, our community pays the county roughly $30 million annually, and the county provides roughly $10 million of services. Additionally, the county's cab no longer gives us a voice. The agendas are restricted along with our voices. Last year, Commissioner Burke-Bigler assured our community that we would have no parking signs and enforcement before this summer. In following up, we learned of the county's inability to produce the physical signs, so the county contracted with IVGID. Now, the holdup is that IVGID is waiting months to be provided with the correct NRS code to place on the signs. This is a very simple example of a simple situation where the county hasn't delivered. We hear from the members of this Board and the county staff that Incline Village is a tourist destination community. You are mistaken. It was developed and maintains a residential community with two hotels. The only way it has become a tourist destination is because this county has ignored its own ordinances, lied to TRPA in 2017 stating short-term rentals were against county code, although it wasn't being enforced, and instead approved RSCVA to collect transient occupancy taxes. This is another example of the county turning its back on our community. Our GID was developed and designed to service the residents of Incline Village and Crystal Bay, not tourists. Due to the county's actions, we are being dangerously overrun with cars, people, and trash. For our county to incorrectly identify our community as a tourist destination demonstrates a lack of understanding. As citizens of Incline Village and Crystal Bay, we need to make some changes as to how we are governed, because it isn't working. Here are some suggestions. Number one, we need to have an autonomous cab to provide this Board with direction on our community's priorities. Number two, we need the county to deliver on its commitments. Simple no-parking signs and parking enforcement would be a first step. Number three, county commissioners could attend our bi-monthly community forum so that you could better understand our concerns and our community. Without these changes, we will continue to be an underrepresented and neglected community. In other words, this is a lose-lose proposition for the county and our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mike Hess, followed by Ms. Elise Weatherly.
Welcome back, Mr. Hess.
Mike Hess, Incline Village. Thank you for having the heavy opportunity to speak. I appear in front of you again to request regulations for parking and short-term rentals in Incline Village and Crystal Bay. Our community held our first public hearing on STRs in January of 2019. Washoe County held its public hearings in September, and TRPA has passed its neighborhood compatibility rules at the area planning level last week. Yet, we are still waiting for any enforceable regulations, or even proposed regulations from Washoe County, for anything related to Incline Village and Crystal Bay. If your staff needs help, we have over 25 people who could volunteer, are aware of the situation, aware of the potential rules, and could help. We are informed and aware, and we talk about it at every community forum, every CAB meeting when there is one. And it's time to set Crystal Bay and Incline Village free. We need our own Commissioner, or we need our own county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Elise Weatherly, followed by Mr. Jeff Church.
Thank you. Elise Weatherly, Washoe County resident. And first of all, I want to start by saying Ms. Schmidt and Mr. Hess are people of action. I call her a lady of action and him a man of action. I was talking to some people about some changes that need to happen. By the way, they're with the Optimists Club, and they said in order to make changes, you have to present things in a positive way. Well, what I decided to do was say, what's the difference between optimism and pessimism? Is it positive versus negative? And it's not what it is, it's the truth. The truth is the truth, regardless of what label you have attached to it. And so, what I will start by saying is, it matters what you believe, because what you believe is what you're going to do. What I noticed is that people believe what they want to believe, but then they don't follow it up with facts. So, my mom says, you just believe what you want to believe. And I said, Mom, I've done the research. I've done the fact-check. I know what I believe is true. And so, I've got a song about it called "Does It Matter." And I don't know if you knew this or not, but the District Attorney's Office, that's his favorite song on the CD, is "Does It Matter," because it says, does it matter what you think? Does it matter what you say? Does it matter what you believe? Also, I would say that it's good to have counsel, but this community doesn't seem to want to listen to the voice of the people. By the way, I am going to go check out a Republican person to say, I don't really believe in Republican versus Democrats, I believe in the truth. But I have some ideas that I would like to share with the President, but you can't get through to him. You know, for example, when you call in your comments, don't just have comments, have them, the person saying, what are you trying to get at? What's your point? What are you trying to change? What are you trying to say? What are you trying to fix? And then put it into application, if you can. And I will say, too, that my brother, he died of what I would say would be chemo overdose. I had some people from a church I went to say, well, your miraculous brain healing, brain tumor healing, wasn't a miracle, because you're not completely healed. I go, what? They go, well, you're on Social Security disability. And I said, yes, because of a chemo overdose. I was given chemo that I didn't need, and it almost killed me. It has taken me four years to try to get back to normal. It's been hard. But in the meantime, you know, what I got to do is John Ponzo from It's All About Music, let me have free recording time. Tom Gordon from Inspired Amateur Productions helped me with this. Dr. Lawrence Davis, Davis Chiropractor, we have a community here. My brother was going, when he was going through his cancer, and I wish I had more time than this, he didn't want to move. He didn't want to do anything. So, what I did, you know what I did? I drug him to the recording studio. I said, we need to get you on, we need to get you down. Tom Gordon, what he did was, he gently helped my brother, who had numb fingers, find the right chords for the song that he played on this CD called "Restless." I've got these things documented, you guys. They're out there in public, but I can't seem to get anybody to listen. Do you know how frustrating that might be? So, I will just say that I'm going to be researching where our money is spent in Washoe County, for anyone who's interested. I will be getting budget reports and looking at them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jeff Church, followed by Mr. Levi Hooper.
Welcome back, Mr.
Good morning, folks. My name is Jeff Church. I run a website, renotaxrevolt.com. Invite you to take a look. If you saw the Reno Gazette-Journal, front page yesterday, you saw the article on the homeless and camping in the parks. Homelessness, now, I'll bet you, everybody in this room wants to help the homeless, including myself. The question is, how do we do it? If we can deal with the homeless situation, it's a win-win for the criminal justice system, it's a win-win for healthcare, it's a win-win for the mentally ill, it's a win-win for everybody. But how do we do it? Now, you're probably aware of the court case that's on appeal, Martin v. Boise, about camping in the parks. But I believe we already are compliant with that court decision. And if you have a legal decision from the Washoe County DA, I'd love to have that, if you could send it my way. One of the things I promote that clearly complies with Martin v. Boise and is humanitarian is a camping area set aside for the homeless. Many will not live in the barracks. We need a camping area that's safe, sanitary, has security, has sanitary facilities. You may be aware of the nationwide plague of typhus and Hapae that have been springing up in the homeless centers. And the bottom line is, we need action. The time to talk is over. We've talked, talked, talked. It's a federal issue, it's a state issue, it's a county issue, it's a city issue, it's a CHAB issue, but we've got to get something done. I'm just begging you to do something. The CHAB, the Homeless Advisory Board, was established in 2011. They meet once monthly, and they talk for a couple hours, and they go home. We've got to do something, folks. That's not enough. And one of the key things in the Advisory Board is, we've got to take out the word advisory. Somebody has to have decision-making authority. Somebody needs a staff and a point of contact that can deal with these. And right now, I think we're just floundering without any specific direction. So, again, everybody in this room, I think, wants to help the homeless. How do we do it? But we've got to do something. We've got to act. And again, I do promote some kind of a camping facility. I have PowerPoints, I've given it to you before. But I had an architect draw up some renderings of a camping facility that's covered, but open-air, has places for them to camp in their tents, they can have their dogs, they can have their family members. You know, having been in the military, I don't want to go into a barracks anymore, but I'd rather camp. So, let's give them what they want, get them out of Pickett Park, get them out of the county parks, and start down this road of finally doing something. Thank you very much for your time, and have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Church.
Mr. Levi Hooper, followed by Mr. Sam Diney.
Hi, kids. Well, I'm here, Levi Hooper, the voice of the downtrodden. So, I recently moved to a new area not too long ago, in the last couple of months. I actually live right by the river where all the tents are, you know? I don't know if you guys know about that, but right by the police station on Second Street, under the bridge by the stadium, there's tents all down the river, all the way down there. Anyway, what I've been doing lately is bringing stuff down to them guys down there, and whatever I can do to help a little bit, but it's getting cold out, and it's scary, and you guys know. Every year, I come down here, and it's cold out, and ask, you know, if you guys, if anybody wants to donate any blankets to me, or anybody, or anything you guys want to donate towards me, I can get it out to the homeless, like, within hours of the donation. I literally live one block from the river. So, if anybody has any kind of donations they could help with, blankets, clothes, anything, my number is 775-737-1037. Just let me know. I mean, food, anything, you guys. The weather changing is really scary. When I walk across the bridge and stuff, I look down off the bridge, and there's more and more homeless people down there every day. It's crazy how much they're, you know, suffering down there. It's like, it's too many people in such a little area that even if a food truck pulls up there to give out food, there's not enough for everybody. There's that many homeless down this river. It's insane. Like, I've never seen anything like it. Like, Tent City is like, only like, a small percentage of what it is now. Like, it's like 10 tent cities now, down that river. And then, if you walk up the river towards the Automobile, Automobile Museum, down the river, there's a whole bunch of places now built on the river that these people have actually taken, like, branches and made walls out of the branches, and made circular houses on the river themselves, like, on the riverbank itself, and they took tarps and old tents and put it over it, so they could have, like, a place. And one lady I saw, she has a vanity in there, mirrors, a poster on her wall, like, she's like, made it into a house down there, you know? And but, with the weather changing and whatnot, you know, one good snowstorm, one good wind could blow that all away, you know? And I just, I don't know what we could do to help out, but maybe along the lines of, like, tents or something. I don't know, something that we could reinforce with them, or help them out. I know, like, it's not necessarily good to have them there, but they're there already, you know? And I just, I don't know how I can help them myself. So, if you guys, anyone has any ideas or anything, let me know. But yeah, that's all I wanted to say today. Thank you, guys. God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper.
Our last speaker is Mr. Sam Diney.
Sam D-N-A-Diney, the guard angel for government, and the guard angel against media panhandling. I'm an Air Force Academy graduate. I spent many years flying fighters and bombers, defending our nation against enemies inside of the border and outside of the border. And I've been to more meetings than the next 500 people added together times 10, and especially to these podiums, trying to protect the citizens from nasty things. And Sam loves it when there's a large audience of his adoring fans to come and see him in action. Yesterday, I was glad to see that that public, that brand-new public holiday that Sam was instrumental in creating went by with a lot of fanfare and happiness by everybody. I'm speaking of what they call Indigenous Peoples' Day. And if I go back four years ago, almost exactly today, there was, some of the indigenous people were very upset because somebody had run over their friends in the middle of a protest, and was injured very badly, and nothing was done. And they were at City Hall, very upset, about 300 of them. And I went to the podium, and I can't guarantee it, but I went to the podium, they all went to the podium, and I went to the podium and single-handedly quelled a riot. No guarantee I did, but those indigenous people were very happy, they had a nice smiley face, and they all left the meeting. And through the years, we've come up with this name of a new, and that wasn't totally my idea, we came up with this Indigenous Peoples' Day. It's a great idea. I still think Columbus probably did a few good things, too. As I change the subject, I don't normally compliment the bureaucrats up there, but I've got to give Commissioner Jeanne Herman as many kudos and compliments as I possibly can. She wrote one of the greatest articles I've ever read, not just the quality of the article, but the content about animals. And they don't get enough credit, and it seems like the Reno City Council is against people having pets. And Jeanne Herman did a phenomenal job of counteracting what they did, and thank you very much. The only problem was, her article is written in this, this is Reno, Nevada, 400,000 people. Here's our newspaper. Look what it, thanks to Sam, it's being dismantled down to that. And that's what's wrong. Nice smiley face. It's been dismantled down to that. The crazy thing is, I come to these podiums with enough information that they could fill five of these newspapers every day, but they're too scared in their pantyhose of Sam D-N-A-Diney, arguably the greatest thing that's ever happened to Reno, and the most humble person you'll ever meet. Thank you, thank you. And you're welcome, and thank you again, Jeanne.
Thank you, Mr. Diney. Mr. Manager, before we close public comment.
Actually, Mr. Chair, in conversation with the District Attorney's Office, it may be more appropriate to do it during the next.
Okay, you can do that.
All right. Very good.
Hold on.
Sure.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak, Madam Clerk?
There's nobody else signed in.
Okay, I have no one else signed in. Is there anyone else wishing to speak who has not already spoken? Okay. I will close public comment and bring it back to the Board, who has not already spoken. Thank you. Mr. Manager, item number six.
Mr. Chair, that takes us on to item number six, Commissioners' County Managers' Announcements, Reports, and Updates to Include Boards and Commission Updates, Requests for Information, or Topics for Future Agendas.
Okay.
And I do have one today.
You do have an item.
I do.
Okay.
So, as you will recall, during the September 24th Board Meeting, you had received a letter from the former Gen County Commissioner in Idaho, Michelle Chadwick, where she asked to publicly thank the Washoe County Search and Rescue Team, who worked on the airplane crash north of Spanish Springs. So, with that, we've asked the Search and Rescue Group to come here today for a public thanking, for the work that they do for Washoe County as a volunteer group. So, if it's all right with them, I'd like to have them come up and just at least state your name at the dais for the record, so we can take this opportunity to publicly thank you for what you do.
Ladies and gentlemen, I cannot begin to express my debt of gratitude for all that you do. People don't realize how important SAR is. They don't realize that you guys and gals donate your time, and when something occurs, you are out there just helping people you don't even know. It's just, it truly is a huge community effort. So, if you would, each one of you, if you would come down and just state your name, I would be eternally grateful.
My name is Brian Block.
Good morning, my name is Joe Musser.
Morning, my name's Roger Cunha.
Good morning, my name's Jeff Moon.
Morning, my name's Spring LaPlante.
Hi there, I'm Alan Shinowski.
Lynn McCauley.
Good morning, Randy Post, and thank you for your support.
Good morning, Andy Monroe.
Scott Zettelmeyer.
Good morning. Luke Holcomb.
Good morning, Eloy Twardy.
Good morning, Rob Pierce, thank you for your support.
Good morning, Don Daggett.
Morning, Jody Wilkins.
Morning, Commissioners, Tom Taber.
Good morning, Terry Wilcox.
Good morning, Bob Bessalo.
Good morning, Jack Wayman.
Good morning, Russ Verenken.
Good morning, Lee Rhodes.
Good morning, Mary Cable and Inca.
Mr. Manager, I would at some point like to do, and I know we've done proclamations for search and rescue, but I'd like to have one before the end of the year.
All right.
Okay? All right. Second thing from me is, absolutely, a round of applause for them. So, one last thing from me, Commissioners. I've introduced these three young ladies. They took the time to thank me for getting some speed bumps on their street, but this is what's really more important. This is not about me, this is about Team Washoe. And Mr. Solero and Mr. Smith, I want to publicly thank you for moving forward with this, recognizing that there was an issue, and addressing it. Their family suffered, it was a physical loss of property when someone driving at a high rate of speed did not negotiate a corner in a neighborhood and blew through their fence and did many, 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 many thousands of dollars of damage in their neighborhood. They petitioned us and asked us for speed bumps. Mr. Solero, Mr. Smith, you guys really kept this alive, and the staff that worked on it all the way through, that did the studies and all of those things. And I just want to publicly thank staff for everything that you guys do to make us look good. So thank you so much. Commissioners, I have no one else signed in. Is there anyone wishing to speak at this time? Commissioner Jung.
Thank you. I would like to have a briefing or an update from whatever staff member is dealing with indigent care and the money that we pay to the hospitals for hospitalization for those people who are unable to afford their own hospital bills. And I'd like to know, and there is a nexus, that's why I'm asking, I'd like to know what their post-hospital stats are as to where these people are going, the indigent, once they are out of the hospital, because by federal mandate, they have to meet certain criteria to receive the Medicaid and the indigent, your tax dollars, indigent services, health services, in terms of readmittance. And if they have no place to put these people, where are they staying? Are they staying in the hospitals? There's one case study in Colorado, Denver, in which somebody has been in the hospital for 1,500 days that the county is paying for in Denver, because there is no appropriate housing for which these people should go to. And Denver has done a really progressive turnaround in response to this very expensive patient. It costs more to put a patient up every single day in a hospital, not to mention they're taking a space from somebody else who's more critical, costs more money than building them housing. So I'm wondering, with the nexus, where is the hospital, where are the hospitals, one of which always claims they're nonprofit with the baby grand and the chululi art in their foyer, which is very expensive? I'd like to know what their plan is for housing for Step Down. In Colorado, they actually built it right on their campus, because some of these people that can't afford housing don't need acute care for themselves, they need wound care, they might need specialists for rehab, vis a vis muscular rehab, I'm not talking about drug rehab, but maybe that, too. So I'm just wondering where Northern Nevada Medical Center, St. Mary's, and Renown are. I want to see the data, I want to see how much we're paying as a county, and I want to see if we can't partner. It's not just going to be them, it's going to take every single one of us in this community to house people who can't afford a roof over their head. So it should start from, obviously, the county, and then the hospitals that we pay money, lots of money to, and indigent care to, and also the hospitals, also the private sector of this county, to look at that as another issue of lots of money being wasted, where it could be used much better for you as taxpayers, not only here at the county level, your federal income taxes are what pay for this Medicaid program in which the hospitals are qualifying for. So I need to speak to somebody and get some research provided, I'm sure the whole commission would like to see it, probably the whole region would love to see this. But as the nexus is, and I'm not going to take its proprietary data either as an answer, the nexus is, we pay their bills. So I want to see what their readmission rate is, how long people are staying, et cetera, and see if, obviously, Denver is a different city, much harder to live outside in, by the way, and, but if it's happening there, it's probably happening everywhere. So we are not the only county that has a homeless issue, right? But we should be on the cutting edge of what we are doing to house people. Fundamentally, I believe it's my job to provide housing for tax, for citizens, and everybody's a taxpayer, by the way, if you buy anything, you pay sales tax. So I would like to really see a much broader conversation as to what the hospitals are doing to meet their metrics and how we might be able to help them with the money that we provide them quite substantially. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burke Bigler, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I mean, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Manager, I was under the understanding that there were no parking signs already installed in Inkind Village, and I know that we had some that were supposed to go into District Two, and District Two didn't want the signs, and so they were going into, going to go into the Inkind Village area. Could somebody please give me a report on exactly where we have not put no parking signs? I really was under the impression, in fact, I know for a fact that some have already gone in, so I would like a complete report on that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, so I'm going to open this back up for myself, but I'm gonna, I was remiss, could you tell us your names? Even though I said them earlier, I'd like you to go ahead and just state your names for us.
My name is Reagan.
Reagan.
Reagan. Reagan. Reagan. Reagan. Reagan. Reagan. Reagan. Reagan. Reagan. Reagan. Reagan. Reagan. Thank you so much.
Thank you again, ladies, you've been, I just want, I also want to acknowledge how well-behaved you are. This is, this is just, you are, you are all just so wonderful, and it's just really a pleasure to have you here today. Okay, Commissioners, anyone else? Mr. Manager, item number seven.
Mr. Chair, that takes us to proclamations today, to proclaim the week of October 20 through 26, 2019, as National Friends of Libraries Week. And I see Director Jeff Scott and Friends of Washoe County Library System President Dan Irwin coming up for the proclamation.
Well, Commissioner Lucy is making his way.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is an honor, obviously, to stand up here in front of the commission and speak about what a wonderful organization that we work with here in Washoe County. We're very fortunate to have the Friends of Washoe County Library to work and chair, or work in conjunction with, to support our libraries and the efforts of reading. And I sit here and tell you all the time how important libraries are, they aren't just a place where we store books, but they're truly community centers where people come to convene and work together, and so many of our issues are addressed through our library system. And I'm very happy to have what a wonderful group here joined with us today. So I'd like to read this proclamation on behalf of Washoe County. Whereas founded in 1980, a member supported 501(c)(3), Friends of Washoe County Library supports the mission, vision, and values of Washoe County Library System, and dedicated to advocating, fundraising, and providing support for the Washoe County Library System. And whereas, Friends of Washoe County Library have donated millions of dollars that have helped to enhance and strengthen the library system by providing the resources for additional programming and much-needed equipment, support for children's summer reading, and special events through the year, and so much more. And whereas, the work of the Friends of Washoe County Library highlights on an ongoing basis that the library system is a central and welcoming community hub that provides opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and to connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past and present. And whereas, the Friends of Washoe County Library understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that the library system gets the resources needed to provide a wide variety of services to all ages. And whereas, the Friends' gift of their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagements and betterment of our community. And now, therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of October 20 through the 26th of 2019 as National Friends of Library Week, dated this 15th day of October 2019, signed by our Chair, Von Harten.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to thank.
Would you identify yourself, sir?
Oh, I'm Dan Irwin, the president of the Friends of Washoe County Library. Three of our board members are joining us this morning, and I'd like to thank the Board of County Commissioners for joining us as partners in raising lots of money together to support our public libraries. And I'd like to represent not only our board, but our book sale steering committee, which is a different group of people, but all loyal volunteers for doing their part and helping us out. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Would you introduce?
Yeah. Come on up and introduce yourselves.
Mary Jones, Board of Directors, and also the book sale steering committee.
Hi, good morning. I'm Sherry Garcia, Treasurer.
Good morning. I'm Cheryl Stopper.
Mr. Scott?
Hi, Jeff Scott, Library Director, Washoe County Library System. I want to thank the Friends of the Washoe County Library, they've been tremendous support of the library. They donate over $125,000 a year to support programs. We have the library summer reading program, thanks to the Friends. We have the new explorer brochure that comes out quarterly, thanks to the Friends. New technology that's come out, thanks to the Friends. We wouldn't be able to do what we do without the support of the Friends of the library. $125,000 a year for a community this size is huge. Most libraries I've worked, it's definitely not that amount, and I've worked in pretty big systems. So really proud to run the library and have Friends to support, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, since this is our only proclamation today, can we take a recess and take a short photo?
Yes. Okay, well, soon as we're done, we'll come back. All right.
You are adorable. You're back. I love you back. Thanks for being here. You know, I used to be, I used to be in the center of the work. I have to center yourself. Every Sunday, I would volunteer to open it and close it. It's my first year here in 2000.
Yeah, it's long. It's long. It's long. We're better than we guess. I just use.
You still only get right.
All right.
There we go.
Yep. Okay. Here we go, and three, two.
Thanks. Thanks for everything. Thank you so much.
You too. I always say thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's always good to see you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
We're going to do this, please.
So, is it the students that you bring up?
Yeah.
You better be up.
Very fresh with them.
Thank you.
Thank you for being so quick.
Thank you.
Josh.
Okay, you guys.
How about if you, yeah, you come in.
Brian's on the other side.
Hammer keeping saying.
All right, here we go.
And three, two.
Geez. You gotta say geez.
You know what? I think you're going to be the future president of the United States.
Good mommy and daddy.
And you didn't even give me a high five.
Five eight at all.
You forgot.
So, yeah, I was, so thanks.
You wasn't there.
That's okay.
That's okay.
What school do you go to, President Ryan?
Have fun in Nashville, too.
All right.
You guys are lucky that you're all sisters.
I told her, I basically think it was about 12, and they're all twins.
She's always, they're always so awesome.
we will call public comment.
Yep. Truly a community model.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to accept the proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Lucy, second by Commissioner Burke Bigler. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not have public comment.
Okay, I will close public comment, bring it back to the board. All is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I believe motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, that'll take us to item number eight, which are your donations today, 8A through 8C2.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'd like to read the donations for you today.
Vice Chair Lucy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today, we are accepting in the form of donations on item eight, 8A, B, and C, and C1, and C2. First, we are accepting a cash donation in the amount of $12,970.62, and in-kind donations from various businesses and organizations here within Washoe County to support our regional parks and open spaces programs, which is a necessity for us to continue to offer quality open space throughout our region. And we want to thank those businesses for their continuous support and donations for those events and areas. Item 8B is a recommendation to accept a cash donation in the amount of $12,500 from Blackrock LLC in support of an increased demand for fire and emergency services for the Burning Man event. And it is a much-needed event, obviously, I mean, a much-needed service during the event in the Gerlach area, and we want to thank Blackrock LLC for that $12,500 that they're donating today. Item 8C1 is a recommendation to accept a donation in the amount of $525 from a private citizen to be used for, to purchase duty firearms for the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. And we want to thank that private citizen to help continue to keep our sheriff deputies safe. 8C2 is a recommendation to accept a cash donation in the amount of $1,000 from the Community Foundation of Western Nevada for the Washoe County Sheriff's Office to be used for the secret witness program. Obviously, the secret witness program is a well-used program for a number of individuals to maintain anonymous identity when reporting incidences.
Okay, I'm gonna bring us back to order. And I need a motion and a second, and then we will call public comment.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to accept the proclamation.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Lucy, second by Commissioner Burke Bigler. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not have public comment.
Okay, I will close public comment, bring it back to the Board. All is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I believe motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, that'll take us to item number eight, which are your donations today, eight A through eight C two.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'd like to read the donations for you today.
Vice Chair Lucy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today, we are accepting in the form of donations on item eight, eight A, B, and C, and C one, and C two. First, we are accepting a cash donation in the amount of $12,970.62 and in-kind donations from various businesses and organizations here within Washoe County to support our regional parks and open spaces programs, which is a necessity for us to continue to offer quality open space throughout our region. And we want to thank those businesses for their continuous support and donations for those events and areas. Item eight B is a recommendation to accept a cash donation in the amount of $12,500 from Blackrock LLC in support of an increased demand for fire and emergency services for the Burning Man event. And it is a much-needed event, obviously, I mean, a much-needed service during the event in the Gerlach area. And we want to thank Blackrock LLC for that $12,500 that they're donating today. Item eight C one is a recommendation to accept a donation in the amount of $525 from a private citizen to be used for, to purchase duty firearms for the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. And we want to thank that private citizen to help continue to keep our sheriff deputies safe. Eight C two is a recommendation to accept a cash donation in the amount of $1,000 from the Community Foundation of Western Nevada for the Washoe County Sheriff's Office to be used for the Secret Witness Program. Obviously, the Secret Witness Program is a well-used program for a number of individuals to maintain anonymous identity when reporting incidences and crimes within our community that help our sheriffs bring victims the justice that they need. So with that, I would make a form of motion to accept all items and under item eight.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Chair Lucy, second by Commissioner Burke Bigler. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on item number eight?
We do. We have Ms. Elise Weatherly signed in, followed by Mr. Sam Diney.
Sam, Diney, Diney. It's too bad that my adoring fans have all left, and Ms. Weatherly's fans have all left too. But we have a relatively empty audience, but I felt like I should come down here and speak on at least this one donation, although I support all four of them. The donation of about $11,000 for Burning Man fire support and emergency support, and I support that. And by the way, as I segue in, my point before of giving kudos to Ms. Irwin was that she was defending, she was defending the ownership of pets, which is so important. And the City Council and the Reno newspaper were actually against it. They were supporting some people being...
Mr. Diney, what does that have to do with the donations?
I was segueing in. I just wondered if you would want to interfere with my waiting this whole time. But anyway, I'm very glad that she wrote that, and I didn't give it enough time to report how important that was, what Commissioner Herman said. Maybe you don't like it when I compliment a commissioner? Is there something about that? No, no. At any rate, Blackrock is donating some money to Burning Man. Now, I was, as a quick background, I was the person who actually saved Burning Man when the county commission wanted to shut it down 20 years ago, almost now. I single-handedly saved it. That was back in 2003. But in the meantime, year after year after year, the Reno Gazette and the city of Reno have fallen in love with Burning Man and allowed them to get away with just about anything they want to do. And that's wrong. That's wrong. Things take place out there that the police would not allow if it was taking place in Reno or in the Washoe County. I think something has to be done about the way those people are disrespecting our community. They really are. They're actually, they're becoming what they're trying to get away from, apparently. And again, they're probably nice people, but they get out there and they figure they don't have to follow any rules or regulations, and I think that has to stop. You need to have the bosses come in here and sit down, and you can invite me to, and I'll talk to them, too, and tell them that they've got to start obeying our regular laws. Any questions? I think I made my point. Thank you, Ms. Herman.
Thank you, Mr. Diney.
Ms. Elise Weatherly.
Elise Weatherly. Hi, thank you. What I was gonna say was hoping that the young ladies would be here because I was going to apologize to them for the mess that we've put this nation into by spending in places where we couldn't really afford it, but they're gone. So what I will say is that I plan on, I had just briefly mentioned it at the last time, I'm gonna go ahead and take a look at the budget reports, just because I do have a background in accounting and IT and all those kinds of things, just to see, it's always about taxation, right? When you donate to a nonprofit organization, which I would highly say to everybody, don't do that anymore, that's what I would say, because it's not worth it, is it taxable? I mean, if somebody gives you in-kind stuff, do they get to write it off their taxes? Just kind of wondering if this is sort of a nonprofit thing. I will say something, too, about the Burning Man. I always thought that it was an offense to the only God that there is, the God of the Jews. And it was my sound engineer and my producer, Tom Gordon, that kind of set things straight on Burning Man. I think it dishonors God, but not everybody out there dishonors God, because no matter where you go, there are going to be people that honor God and don't. It doesn't matter what the function or event is. So he is a decent man, and he goes out there, and I don't nag him not to, even though it might chew into our recording time together. I will also say Secret Witness Program. I have some little burning doubts about that, only because I was invited to play the music at the 30-year anniversary program. I was asked to play Arms of the Angel. It was one of the hardest things that I think I've ever done in my life. It was very tearful. But that is a place, you guys, that I learned something about forgiveness. You do not, forgiveness is not mandatory if somebody does not ask you for forgiveness. Mark Klaus does not have to forgive Richard Allen Davis for kidnapping, raping, murdering, and burning his 12-year-old daughter's body. He was told at that event that unless he forgave Mark, unless Mark Klaus forgave Richard Allen Davis, he would not see Paulie in heaven. I spent years studying and researching that, and I finally went, no, that is not true. Forgiveness is a reciprocal event. So I do like the Secret Witness Program. I wish it didn't have to be, you know, secret. I wish we could just come out and say, I saw somebody doing something wrong and not get paid for it. But unfortunately, that's the economy of our world. We have to be paid to tell secrets, because if we do, it could put our lives in the line. So forgiveness. If somebody comes up and asks me for their forgiveness, I am mandated to give it to them if they mean it. And if there's an evidence that they actually do mean it, which is called repentance. So all these people that are in prison and stuff, I don't have to forgive them, you guys. I don't forgive Richard Allen Davis. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherly.
There's nobody else signed in.
Okay. Oh, close public comment. We have a motion and a second. I believe we have a motion by Commissioner Lucy, second by Commissioner Burke Bigler. Any discussion, Commissioners? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay? Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, that takes us to item number nine, which is a presentation on capital improvement funding and possible direction to continue to explore financing and implementation strategies for future capital improvement needs through the strategic planning and capital improvement budgeting process. And Assistant County Manager Christine Valetich is here with a little team to give you a presentation.
Okay, welcome.
And Mr. Chairman, for the record, I do have the presentation to pass out to the Board, and there is one available in the back of the room.
Okay.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. Just a little background on why we're doing this item today. Recently, the Board has been presented with master plan updates for the downtown area, for this Ninth Street administrative complex, and also for the sheriff's facilities up at 911 Parr. And the Board has directed staff to work on a capital improvement funding plan for those master plan projects. So would like to take the opportunity today to do a status update on our capital budgeting process today. Basically, what I'd like to talk with you about today is just a little bit of a background about capital budgeting and why it's important. A lot of times, we don't take the time during budget season to really go a little bit more in-depth on capital projects, more of a focus on the operating budget. So I'd like to do that today, take a look at some of the recommended best practices, both from ICMA, International City and County Managers Association, and the Government Finance Officers Association, and then our own county policies and how they kind of stack up against those recommended practices. And then just briefly kind of recapping our capital improvement plan, looking at the future capital improvements that are on the horizon, and some resources for funding of those improvements. So a capital budget is basically a financial plan, and that's what we've been tasked with doing. This is just a definition, you know, providing the means to update, to obtain and allocate resources and methods to effectively deliver publicly determined needs for governmental capital assets. And that can include land, buildings, machinery, equipment, infrastructure, works of art, other tangible assets. Why is this so important? Well, the stakes are high. Capital infrastructure, facilities, and equipment. We're talking about large, major facilities that are very expensive to build, and it does require special planning, financing, and management are called for to make sure that our money is well-spent when the county invests in projects. These decisions are long-term. They extend for years, and the facilities and infrastructure have to last during that time to be used by citizens and employees, sometimes for decades. And our capital asset spending varies from year to year, so we're not building a major facility every year. It's dependent on growth and the age of our current facilities and so forth. Takes time to implement capital projects. You know, we use careful planning. We have to be certain about the scope and size, design complexity. We have to mitigate risk, environmental and other risks. And it can take years or as long as a decade to produce a viable project. Long-term debt financing is also often required. Typically, we don't have enough cash to pay for large facilities outright, and so we do have to issue debt and borrow money. That's something that we have to consider, because that is a commitment of future revenues, typically taxes, and it requires our citizens that are going to use the facility or infrastructure in the future years to pay for that and for the decisions that are made today. Also, capital project improvements, it's multi-year, and a recommended practice is adoption of a capital improvement plan. You know, it starts with a needs assessment, and that should be aligned with the organization's strategic plan. Citizens and other stakeholders' involvement is also very important, especially when we're, as we've mentioned, committing future revenues that they'll be paying. And then we also look at the costs, not just of the project itself, but the impact on ongoing operations to run that facility, for the expansion of programs and so forth. So prioritization of capital requests is very important, and we want to base it on policy and a risk-based methodology. A plan for capital maintenance and replacement projects, so this is also part of it. We're not just talking about new facilities. Accounting has existing facilities, assets, infrastructure that have to be maintained, and we're always going to have that. So we both have to plan for new, our needs for new facilities, as well as maintaining what we already have. And organization-wide master planning, that's something you've been hearing about a lot lately. You've had the master plans presented to you. That is really critical, because it does promote long-term planning and financial sustainability. Time horizons are typically a lot longer than our annual budget cycle, and it identifies what is needed, provides options, and this is pretty key here. It's dependent upon resources, what we can afford and desired service levels. And we'll talk a little bit more about that a little further in the presentation. So development of financing strategies. We look at the types of funding sources, pay-as-you-go versus debt financing, regional and public-private partnerships, and we adopt a formal capital budget. And that's very important. Any projects that we're going to undertake need to be budgeted for and planned. So now I'd like to take a recap of Washoe County's policies around capital improvements, and I think you'll see that they align very closely with the recommended best practices that we just talked about. We have a capital improvement program management policy, and so the goal there is to systematically plan, schedule, and finance projects to ensure their cost-effectiveness. We strive to balance between capital needs, capital repair and replacement projects, and available resources. So just as the recommended practice says, maintain your existing assets, plan well for your needs, efficiently finance them, and look at your available resources to see what is actually affordable. There's the capital improvement maintenance and replacement policy. Again, this is a big emphasis on maintaining existing facilities and assets to minimize future maintenance and replacement costs. And then our resource allocation policy says that discretionary sources shall be allocated in direct relation to strategic goals of the Board. So discretionary resources can be one-time sources of funding. So let's say that we have a better-than-anticipated result in the general fund, and we are, our undesignedated fund balance is actually above the Board's policy. The Board has a policy of 10% to 17%. We could entertain using some of those one-time monies to re-allocate towards a capital project, which is a one-time use. And then again, emphasizing that projects will accomplish the strategic goals of the Board. And then lastly, our capital improvement funding policy. It states that revenue resources for proposed projects shall be identified in the annual operating and capital improvement program budgets. And so that's part of why we're here to talk to you today. We are starting fiscal year '21 capital improvement planning right now and budgeting and working with departments, and soon we'll be getting into the operating budget as well. Alternative financing methods shall be analyzed. Again, projects must meet the county's strategic goals. There's a big emphasis on that in our policies. And that the county will strive to maintain a high reliance on pay-as-you-go financing for its capital improvements. And that's basically setting monies aside. That's your cash, and we all want to have a high reliance on that where possible. We, as a county, do prepare a five-year capital improvement plan, and the Board adopts that every year when we bring the budget forth. We're required to do that per NRS, and we're required to file that plan with the Department of Taxation and also with the County Debt Management Commission. Our current plan, that the Board adopted last May, the five-year plan, has a total of estimated cost of $312 million in projects. But some of those projects may change as we get further out in those years. They are estimates, and, you know, we don't know everything about those projects. They are planned. For fiscal year 2020, the first year of the five-year plan, that's the part that we budget every year. And so we have $149 million budgeted currently for those projects. Years two to five are planned, as I mentioned. And the master plan projects that have been coming forward recently and any other emerging needs for projects that we don't know about or that departments will be bringing forth are not yet included in that capital improvement plan. So that's part of what we're working on now. So this is just a summary. This was presented to you back in May when the CIP plan was adopted. And so you can see just graphically or in this chart, year one, that $145 million, and the total of the five years, $312 million. And this lays it out by fund. So we obviously use fund accounting in governmental accounting and to also account for projects. So we have a capital improvement fund and some various other funds where we account for the projects. And I'll talk about those a little bit more. The capital improvement fund is really the largest one, and this is where projects that we have to maintain and replace existing facilities, major equipment, technology systems, and construction of new capital assets typically are budgeted and accounted for in our capital improvement fund. But then we do some other projects as well. We have a Parks Capital Projects Fund. Those projects typically have their own funding sources through the residential construction taxes and voter-approved bonds, grants, and donations. The Roads Fund has infrastructure projects as well. It receives funding from restricted fuel taxes and the Capital Facilities Tax Fund. Utilities, this is a big one. I know the Board earlier this year approved the financing of the expansion of the South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Plant. That has its own funding source as well, and that is through utility fees and connection charges. And then lastly, Equipment Services Fund, this is really for our vehicle fleet replacement, and that one is an internal service fund. So we charge departments in their operating budgets each year a charge for those vehicle replacements. So I'd like to now focus more on the first one, the capital improvement fund. And just to show you the variety of projects that we currently have on our plate for fiscal year '20. And typically, in this capital improvement fund, we've been able to provide about $5 to $6 million of general fund support in recent years. Now, that dropped as low as about $1 million during the recession, and so then we had, as you all know, quite a few years of deferred maintenance, and you saw a lot of those projects for roof replacements, HVACs and such. It also gets funding from grants and fees and pay-as-you-go resources. On average, though, we're only able to fund about 40% to 50% of the requests that departments have. So we do go through a prioritization process. We have a CIP committee, and we try to do the most we can within the funding available. And you can see there's a wide variety, everything from, this year, from voters, additional election tablets, Reno Justice Court hearing rooms... election tablets, Reno Justice Court hearing room, some more roof replacements, animal services, security upgrade in their lobby, some visitation rooms up at the jail, P-25 and the Nevada Shared Radio System. And we're replacing that radio system. That's part of it. And that is only the current year cost. So the balance of that project is going to go on for a number of years. And we are going to be coming back to you for some financing on that in the future and so forth. Some of the bigger ones in here is the NAMs Campus remodel. And we've been talking a lot about that project. Wonderful project. It's an $11 million project that we're doing this year. And you can see just a variety of golf course rehabilitation, some parks projects, the Bartley Ranch Bridge to the MAR property, improving the public water system in the park. And then some technology projects to update our central disk storage and disk backup and also moving to switch for a disaster recovery site. So just graphically looking at the funding in the capital improvement fund, this year, the general fund is providing 41% of that, $8.8 million. So 6.3, that's that $5 to $6 million that I've talked about that we've been able to support. And that is for the projects, many of the projects that we just saw on the list before. And then $2.5 million for the NAMs project. Other funding sources, the other big one, Indigent Fund, that was fund balance also going into the NAMs project. That was a pay-as-you-go resource. The Wild Creek Land Sale is funding that golf course rehabilitation and a number of other areas. So looking to the future, when we're looking at our projects that are planned for years two through five, which is fiscal years '21, oh, sorry, the plan, we have, we have projects planned for years two through five. They're not all funded yet, only year one. But in addition to that, we have emerging needs, right? And so now we're looking at fiscal year '21 through '40. So basically, the next 20 years. And these are those long-term projects. Existing facilities and infrastructure maintenance, as I mentioned, we're always going to have that. So we do include those. Major equipment replacements, technology systems replacements. So one of the more important systems, I wouldn't say more important, but larger and expensive systems that we are going to have to replace is our financial system, SAP. That system is almost 20 years old. We have bought additional years of maintenance on that because the vendor doesn't maintain it any longer. So that is something we're going to have to look at. We can't be without a financial system and that's costly. So we're looking at those types of systems as well, not just for that system, but others that are used throughout the county. And then new facilities and infrastructure. So here's where the master plan projects, flood, stormwater, and other projects, those emerging needs would come forward. So we've tried to capture all of this into a projection. These are estimated numbers, but just to give folks an idea. And there, the columns are '21 through '25, '26 through '30. So those are five-year periods. And then the last one is a 10-year period. And so you can see, just in the next five years, when we add in those projects that are currently planned but not funded, and we add in the master plans, we're looking at $325 million. And then if we look over the entire period of the next 20 years, it is a little bit over $1 billion. And that was something that was significant for me to see in doing this because that is a lot of money. So now, looking at it a little bit differently, taking those needs and looking at what funding may be required. In this chart here, these bar graphs, they're the same five, five, and 10-year period. The blue is assuming that we would continue general fund support at existing level, right? That $5 to $6 million a year. So that kind of shows you how much that would be. And the orange is what we're looking for to find funding for. So about $950 million more than, than what we currently have. And so it's going to be very important as we go forward to prioritize projects. That's going to be needed. And depending on that prioritization, we would need additional revenue sources to actually construct these projects. And even then, when we look at some of those revenue sources available to us, we may not be able to do it all. So that's where it gets back to prioritization is going to be key in this. So what are our resources that we're looking at? We, we talked about pay-as-you-go or our cash, you know, one-time resources from fund balance or monies that we could start setting aside for specific projects. We have the general fund continued annual support, which we would recommend continuing to do because we will always have to replace and update and fix existing facilities. Grants is certainly something we can look to as a pay-as-you-go source, but they can be limited for construction, kind of hard to find. And then our other potential revenue sources, ad valorem tax, C-tax, sales tax. I'm going to go into each one of these a little bit more in-depth. Fees also are a possibility. They're typically not a significant resource when we're talking about projects of this large, but they can certainly help to pay for part of it. And then other taxes, such as the supplemental government services tax. So our ad valorem or our property tax debt rate, so it's a portion of the property tax rate that is dedicated to debt service. And those are for voter-approved bonds that we currently have outstanding. We can't use it for anything other than that. Right now, we have $23.4 million outstanding and those bonds will mature in 2030, so in about 10 years. Issuance of additional ad valorem debt would require voter approval. And then we have consolidated tax. And this is a consolidated tax is a large part of our general fund. If you'll recall, property tax and C-tax are really the largest funding sources for our general operations. C-tax, the county is limited by NRS to pledge up to 15% of C-tax revenues as a security for debt. So currently, we have $51.5 million outstanding and the last bonds mature in fiscal year 2036. If you'll recall, a couple of years ago, the county constructed the medical examiner's building across the street here. And those were, that building was financed with C-tax bonds as a revenue source. The issuance of additional C-tax bonds is dependent on that 15% limit on what we can pledge and also on affordability. Most of our C-tax goes right now to pay for county operations. So currently, we have $120 million budgeted for this fiscal year. $114 million of that goes for county operations and $6 million to pay this existing debt that's out there. We also have library expansion tax. So this is one that was approved in 1994 based on a property tax override, was voter-approved. It is for a tax of period of 30 years. So it's going to sunset in 2025. The allowable use is for acquiring, constructing, improving, operating, and maintaining county library facilities. So if that tax were to be extended to use for library facilities, it would have to be approved by the voters again by November of 2024 to continue that tax for those purposes. Then there's also a sales tax for infrastructure. So this was authorized by NRS 377B, excuse me, and the county imposed an ordinance in 1998. This one is restricted to pay for projects for public safety and for management of flood planes and flood prevention. The Board of County Commissioners are the legislative body that approves the plan for expenditure of this tax. And it was last amended in 2009. Currently, there's $27 million in bonds outstanding and those mature in 2036. What those bonds paid for is the construction of the regional public safety training centers. And that's a public safety facility, as well as the Regional Emergency Operations Center. And also, on the flood side, for the Truckee River Flood Management Authority's flood project. So after paying the debt service on this tax, the balance of the revenue goes to Truckee River Flood Management Authority for the flood management project and the costs associated with that. The NRS does require that, honor before the date, that the expenditure plan expires, that the board shall determine whether necessity exists for continued imposition of this tax. So down the road, as we get closer to those bonds maturing or something else changes, the board will have to evaluate whether they want to continue to impose it. So supplemental government service tax, this one currently, we do not have in place. The revenue on this one varies annually because it's tied to motor vehicle registrations. So during the Great Recession, we saw it drop 24%. So it went down 3.1 million. The current estimated gross annual revenue would be anywhere in the range from 12 to 14 million. But we wouldn't be able to bond on that total amount because we'd have to set aside some for debt service coverage. So it would be less than that amount. We're looking right now and working with a bond counsel on a legal opinion because of the way the statute is written. It's very clear that you can issue debt for the construction and maintenance of sidewalks, streets, right-ofways, for vehicles, traffic. And then there's the last part of the statute that says, and the county can spend it on any other operating need. And so we can spend it, yes, but the question is, could we pledge it to debt service? Because if we cannot pledge it for debt service, we might have to tap into that 15% C-tax limitation to pledge that as collateral for the debt while we could use this to pay for it. Some of the history on that is the county did have it in place in 1991. And then AB 471 in 2005 basically ended it. In 2009, the legislature broadened the allowable use. And in 2011, it allowed Washoe County to reimpose it without voter approval. But we've not done that as a county. There was an advisory ballot question, which failed in 2012. And then in 2016, the citizen survey asked the question whether citizens would support it for these specific purposes. So culture and recreational facilities, 53% were opposed. For senior programs, only 46 were opposed. So a little bit better on that front. So based on our current year fiscal year '20 budget, if we look at some of these existing resources, for example, the library expansion tax is budgeted at $3 million, but we have other commitments of $2.5 million already against that. So it would yield about $500,000 per year. Ad valorem debt rate, there's a little bit there, $227,000. Consolidate, consolidated debt, sorry, consolidated tax debt service, there's no additional funding there. And then the infrastructure sales tax, which we've already talked about. You could see the debt is almost $2 million, 1.95 million. So for the current year, we'd have about $700,000 available, which is not going to buy us very much. So and then looking at estimated existing revenues available through the longer period of fiscal year '21 through '40, you can see we're still limited. We get up to about $10 million a year, starting in, looks like, 2036, where some of those bonds are going to mature that we have outstanding. And so while that is a viable revenue source, but if we were to bond against that, it would generate maybe $100 million, maybe a little bit more than that for a project. And we're looking at $950 million if we go back to earlier when we looked at all of those master plans. So before we can really develop a capital funding plan and a budget, we're looking for direction from the board to help us with that, to kind of narrow down the field, if you will. One recommendation that we would have is to continue to budget general fund support for those maintenance and replacement projects as we have been doing, that $5 to $6 million a year to make sure we're keeping up on maintaining our existing facilities and infrastructure. And then our second recommendation would be that we would love to have further discussion with the board in a strategic planning work session where maybe we have a little bit more time to talk about these things and look at capital projects prioritization. And we'd like to know if there's any additional information that the board would like on that, that would help with that. So if you think of anything now or later, please let us know that. And then in regards to the funding sources, obviously, they are there, but there's actions that would have to be taken to continue, reallocate, or put some of those things in place. And then just our next steps, as I've mentioned, right now, we are in the capital budgeting process. Departments are working on their project requests. We've been providing some training to departments. We have another training session coming up this Thursday. We hopefully will have another board strategic planning workshop. We usually do that around the beginning of the year to get direction on the budget. So that might be a good time to talk about this, but we could certainly do it sooner than that if the board would like that. And then we proposed, operating and capital budgets are presented to the board by April 15. That's the tentative budget. And then in May is when the final budgets are adopted. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Okay, thank you. And I know I have some questions, but Vice Chair Lucy, you're signed in first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Fulladage, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. I do have a couple of questions. Can we go back to your slide on slide nine, where you talk about the capital improvement, maintenance, replacement policy? Do we have a usable life timeline in that policy in regards to our buildings? Or is it just kind of operational cost? What, I know in commercial real estate, it's usually 32 years for full depreciation, sometimes on buildings. What is our usable life? I know in government, federal government uses a 50-year timeline. What do we have in our policy?
I think it depends on the asset, obviously, if it's a building versus equipment. And I don't know.
Specifically, I'm, I'm looking more specifically buildings.
I believe it's 50 years, but I, I don't know that for certain. I think it's more of a question for the planning folks and maybe our capital improvement director.
Okay. Well, if somebody could give me that a little bit more detail.
We can certainly come back to that.
Where that is in our policy. And then another question I have, going back down to your last slide in regards to the consolidated tasks on '21. So you said, we currently are using 114 of the $120 million towards county operations and only $6 million to pay existing debt service. Now, obviously, is that 114 is necessary for county operations. But what, I mean, is there ways to, I mean, I know obviously, C-tax is something that fluctuates and is not always something that we can continue to push forward. But I worry that with the C-tax, not, not being able to really fund any kind of CIP projects and just being going, going towards operations, it doesn't give us a whole, a whole bunch of flexibility. Because what I'm looking at, based upon what you're pointing out here, there's $1 billion of capital funding needs. We don't have, we have $750,000 this year and then over the life, maybe, you know, a couple hundred million, maybe, in excess if we, if we manage and conserve. I mean, I'm, I'm really concerned about how we move forward when we talk about certain, one, certain, certain of our buildings are currently at 40 years of usable life and if not longer. And the cost of continued maintenance, what I didn't see in your presentation today is the cost of ongoing maintenance versus replacement costs. So I'd like to kind of that, I'd like to see that broken out. What, what are those ongoing maintenance costs? And we did talk about that in the master plan, the facilities master plan. But those are costs that, you know, either the dollars either go towards replacement. And so when, we need to kind of, for the board to really sit here and have that discussion. And we're talking just about replacement of assets and facilities and operations. We're not talking about anything, anything new or extra. Or, I mean, we've, this, this board has approved the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Right now, we have no dollars to, to fund. Right now, we have no dollars to fund that with, and, you know, a great need to do stuff with those dollars right now. And I'm not seeing, I mean, outside of, you know, the soonest one that's going to sunset here would be in 2036, no, 2025, which is library expansion tax. There is just not a whole lot there, and I want to know where are some ways, and I think that's what the question from this board was, is where are the ways that we can find to restructure some of this, these financing and revenue sources so that we could potentially, and if this, if this is all that we have to work from, this is challenging for us. And, you know, a path forward, is it legislatively? Is there ways that we need to go about it? And I just have some bigger concerns about that, so, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burke Bigler, have you signed in also?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I totally agree with Commissioner Lucy. I am gravely concerned about how we're going to continue to manage the county as a whole and do the projects that we need to do. Without question, homeless is an issue. We need, we're going to need further expansion of the NAMs campus as we expand and move more of the homeless there. Low-income housing is a serious, serious problem here. The average median home price now is $400,000. That's just unachievable for almost, for most people. Even for two-income families, that's unachievable. So I think I asked this, I'm asking you the same question that I think Commissioner Lucy was asking, and that is, are there, is there some way we can look at flexibility? So let's talk about the funds that go to the flood project. Is the flood project really necessary? And if it's not really necessary, and I guess that's a discussion that this board would have to have, but if it's not really necessary to worry about whether or not the river, we're putting money into whether or not the river's going to flood again, we all know it will, no matter how much money we throw at it, is that a place that we could move the money from somewhere else? And of course, I know that's a decision that has to come from the board, but I think that's what I'm asking, and I think that's what Commissioner Lucy was asking, is where are the flexible funds that we could say, "Look, we've been funding this project, and we're not going to fund this project because this one over here is more important." And I really think that's what we need, we need guidance from you on. So I appreciate your time. This is really great information, but it's frightening to think we have $700,000 that's flexible. That isn't going to, that isn't going to pay for anything, you know? I mean, that, if we have a major incident, $700,000 isn't going to pay to assist with a major incident. And I know there's money put away, and there's investments and all of those things, but that's not really what we're talking about here. We're trying to figure out a way to how, how do we continue to move forward in a positive manner with the projects that we've got to work on? So thank you if you can provide that information to us.
Okay, I'm going to jump in here. So my question is, on slide 12, the utilities fund. So those are, those are basically ratepayers' users' fees that are, that generate that fund, am I correct?
That's correct. Also, connection fees.
Connection fees.
So for expansion.
And assure me, and I'm, I know the answer, but I want to make sure that this goes on the record, we don't co-mingle those funds. So we don't take money from the South Truckee Meadows and put it towards something in, let's say, Cold Springs, or vice versa, something from Cold Springs and putting it, put into South Truckee Meadows. Or I believe this utilities fund also includes the Spanish Springs Stormwater Detention Facility, which is self-funded. It's funded by the ratepayers in that benefit district.
Right. They may be in the utilities fund, but they are segregated.
Okay.
And specifically with the South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Plan.
Yes.
The financing that we're getting ready to do with the state revolving fund loan, that's, those revenues will be specifically dedicated.
Right. Okay, good. I wanted to make sure that that went on the record. Then I have a question, because I didn't think we generated this much money. On your slide 14, the Wild Creek Golf Course Rehab Program, it's at 2.25 million. I thought we only got about a million dollars out of that. What, from the sale of the land?
If I may jump in there, for the record, Dave Solaro, we actually received a little over $3.1 million for the sale of the land and water rights associated with Wild Creek.
Oh, the water rights.
Correct. Yeah. So that's that piece. We've budgeted 2.25 million in this fiscal year.
Okay. So essentially, it's self-funding, though? We're not, we're not putting any, it's just, it's a pass-through?
That is correct. The direction from the board was to take that money and put it into Wild Creek in the golf fund for specific use at Wild Creek.
To rehab it, right, but I want to make sure that no additional funds.
That is correct. That was the direction from them.
Good. Okay, I have a few more questions, but I'll let Vice Chair Lucy jump back in here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Solaro, and maybe you can bring some, and put this on the record as well, as we identify capital needs and it goes to the, it does not come to this board, it goes to a separate board that discusses the capital improvement needs in the county, is that correct?
That is correct. We do have a capital improvement committee that is set up by this board for the review and prioritization, risk analysis, all of those types of things that then become a recommendation from the manager to this board on the capital funding.
And they, and how do they go about, can you kind of elaborate a little bit on how they go about prioritizing the projects? Are they just giving every project, or how is that done? I mean, just for some information for the public and for me.
Sure. For the, for the record, the committee itself, every year, reviews every single project that is submitted from department heads. We have a process whereby the department heads submit their projects based on priority, so we look at the priority of the department itself. We also go back and review how that matches up to the strategic plan, as you heard, that was part of our policy on capital funding, that, you know, how it matches up to the strategic plan. We do a needs-based review against existing master plans, as far as the project, does it fit within an existing master plan, so we're not trying a one-off if, you know, at all possible. We have a risk-based review of some of those maintenance needs, so there's a large portion of this that is maintenance requirements. So for instance, we saw the list, we see the list there, 911 Par, Housing Unit 4, HVAC and Roof. That is a project to replace aging infrastructure at the jail. Again, the jail is one of those that we've spent quite a bit of funding over the years because it's, it's a longer facility. As you've discussed, here, some of our buildings are getting up there in age. These are the types of things, you know, it's one thing for the building to age out, but our equipment ages out faster than the actual structure of the building, and so these are the things that we prioritize. We do that with our asset management software, so we know kind of what those, the lifespan of those maintenance activities should be, so that we're not replacing something prematurely. So there's, there's quite a process that we go through, and we have a ranking system. We have, let's see, there are, there's Technology Services Director, the Comp Controller, the three Assistant County Managers, and a budget person that are a part of that discussion period. We rank all of these projects based on set criteria that everybody knows when you go into this process, so that it's, so that we clearly understand why we're ranking these, you know, these items the way they are. They're scored, we look at the scores individually, we look at the scores as an aggregate, and we create a funding plan based on that kind of ranking. So I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it. And then last question I have, as it pertains to, when we talk about assets, have we gone and looked at what the disposition costs would be, or what we, any revenues we would gain from disposition of certain assets? Have we done that evaluation on our buildings? I know we've talked about 350 South Center, what the, what maybe that would cost, I mean, what that revenue that would generate if a sale was to happen, if we were to move that, that building, or purchase another new building, or do something with that? Have we assessed those?
So we've done portions of that assessment, you know, at the point when we decide to make that, that full determination that, you know, that building no longer meets our needs, or we need to put so much money into it that, you know, we do that review. So I'm not sure if you, if you saw the Capital Funding Protection Committee from the Washoe County School District, but they're going through that process right now with one of their middle schools. They're reviewing the amount of money going into the renovation of that middle school to meet their needs versus the cost of a new facility. And so we do that very similar sort of thing. So 350 Center Street, you know, if we needed to create more space, that would be one of those things we looked at. Is that, is that an option to move that to a different facility, or new construction versus renovating for the needs that have identified? That's why we did the master planning process. The master planning process helps us along those needs, identifying the usefulness of our current buildings for the need that's been identified, and options for meeting that.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. So, and I'll ask my, my second piece of the question. You mentioned that SAP is becoming outdated. My fear is, and this happens everywhere, I mean, it doesn't matter, you know, started with DOS, and then went to Windows, and then we worked our way up, and we're now at Windows 10, and every time you turn around, your version becomes outdated and software no longer operates, the old pieces of software that you have, but new pieces of software won't work, and it, and there's a huge learning curve in many cases. When we go to replace SAP, have we also factored in the cost of not just the software itself, but, but bringing staff up to speed so that everyone understands the operation of the new software and the new system?
Yeah, thank you. That's a great point. It's really important. It's not just the system, but then there's the implementation cost, too. And with something like that, it can be quite extensive in terms of just making sure it's, it's working and functioning properly, training staff. Oftentimes, you may have to change a process, right? You did something with the old system a certain way for years and years, and you may have to change the way you work a little bit, so yes, we would factor that in, but that's part of those operating costs. So when we're looking at a capital project, whether it's a system or a building, you're looking at the construction portion, but then what's the ongoing cost to actually get it up and running and continue to operate it?
Well, and integration with other pieces of software that are used throughout the county.
Correct. And so we do have our Technology Services Group and our SAP, I don't know, there's a group out there, I know Lori's on it, that are experts within the county looking at that. You know, years ago, ERP systems were the thing that you did, and these big humongous systems, and oftentimes, organizations didn't use them to their full extent, right? They could do a lot more, and you paid a lot. So there's one school of thought out there now that maybe ERP systems are not the way to go, because software has become more nimble and it's easier to integrate, so it might be a series of systems, you know? There might be a core financial system, and then a HR payroll system, and that work together, a budgeting system would be great, but we're looking at all of those things.
Okay. And so what I'm, what I'm actually hearing you say, though, is that many of those costs are still unknown.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Vice Chair Lucy, I still have.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. You actually sponsored for me, you know, Ms. Vladej, you identified that, obviously, on your slide 13, you know, we have capital improvement fund, the Parks Capital Fund, Roads Fund, Utility Fund, Equipment Services, but within the capital improvement fund, there's technology systems. Have we ever, have we ever discussed from, in from your staffs and from your departments, the benefit of having a county-wide technology fund because, to the chairman's point, because technology needs change so dramatically countywide, and we have this need for those constant upgrades? Is there, identify that constantly we have a percentage of money set aside in the general fund, but that's going to be always needed for technology upgrades?
We do not currently, but that is, that's a great idea. I love that idea. And some organizations set it up similar to the last one there, called the Equipment Services Fund, where you would, you know, set that aside.
A certain percentage from each department.
Right, or we could do it in a capital improvement fund, but yes, I mean, that would be a wise thing to do if we could do something like that.
I just think as we continue to move into a digital, obviously, we're already in a digital age, but all of us have devices up here that we vote on, we utilize it to communicate with constituents, we do everything, every system that we use, from accounting to communication, everything that we do here is revolved around technology, and I think it's something that we need to obviously continue to talk about. And to the chairman's point, as everything continues to evolve and systems evolve and whatnot, we need a constant availability, and if there's funds not available, or a department is short that year, or whatever, that, that leaves a hole in services. So that's another thing we need to talk about, not just the buildings that we reside in, but also the actual equipment that we utilize. So I think that's something we should positively discuss in the next budget cycle.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Mr. Solaro, I have you signed in.
I was actually just hoping to get the, kind of the last, after all the commissioners have had a chance to speak, so that was kind of a spot there, just a couple of items moving forward.
Okay. Commissioner Herman?
All right. So we haven't talked about roads in the county. I just, I'm curious, what it would take, what amount this should be in roads that would allow us to be able to take care of our county roads in the north part of this county? And that can be a separate thing from whoever it is that needs to do that, but I would like to see what that it would be. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Jung?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question, again, because I missed it. Who was on your CIP committee? Who are those members? Technology Services, three Assistant County Managers, Comp Controller?
Yes, I believe those are the voting members of the, oh, Lori Cook, the Budget Manager, is a voting member as well.
Lori Cook, who knows the budget forwards and backwards and by heart.
Yep.
Yes, it's smart that she's on that.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, that's good to know. To the lamentations by the board up here with the money situation that we're in, let me tell you something, from 2007 onward, this looks fabulous. We had nothing, absolutely no money, we had zero at the end of the day. We deferred so much capital improvement maintenance that in many ways, I think the GST should have been raised then, because those capital improvements that all you taxpayers invested in fell apart because they didn't get their annual maintenance. So that, we have to be looking at the long-term issues, not the short expedient issues, because it's, as a fiduciary agent, I think it's wildly irresponsible to not be investing these money into our capital projects. None of us, I would venture to guess, everybody up here at the dais, including the clerk, the DA, and the general manager, and the five electeds defer our capital improvements personally. We do everything we can to put a roof on before we buy internet access. I mean, just to use a very vast way to compare the two. I do want to talk about this flood tax and what it would cost. Can somebody reach out to flood and then check their numbers about what would it cost to, if we abandoned the Flood Management Authority, what would we need to set aside for maintenance of the capital improvements that we've used taxpayers' dollars to help in some way, shape or form alleviate, but never eradicate flooding? As Commissioner Burke Bigler said, it's never going to happen, and the Army Corps is never going to pay. We've learned that over and over. They're not paying for our project. So I'd like to know, what would that generate per year if we brought that back in-house and had the maintenance in-house of the Truckee Drain? There's a few things that they did manage to implement as a flood managing board, and I don't want to abandon those if we took it back. So what would be the ongoing maintenance and capital improvements for those? And then I'm wondering, with, when it comes to roads and capital improvement projects in the unincorporated county that aren't regional, what is our bandwidth? What is the, what does the legal team say here about the RTC fuel tax that was approved by voters? I know, because I helped work on that initiative. What else can we use it for? Could we ask them to put maybe 10 percent over and into non-regional roads or public safety? I know there's some key words in the language, I haven't looked at it in a long time, that was back in 2004, maybe, 2003 ballot initiative. I think there might be some money that could be taken from there and applied legally from all the people that pay fuel tax countywide, that we've been collecting money on and has been going up. Also, I'm well aware that fuel tax is not going to get us out of anything, because more and more people are going to go to electrical vehicles. Maybe we should have a tire tax, I don't know. I know they're trying to do the mileage tax, but I would like to see your, and the DA's analysis of where and how that would work, as well as with the flood money. I do want to put on the record that a citizen survey from 2016 is useless. This is very different people here now in the last three years, and also, our surveys as a county stink. They've never been, they're not scientific. years. And also, our surveys as a county stink. They've never been, they're not scientific, they're not fully vetted. We, we've never spent the real money to get a good citizen survey. And then also, 2012 advisory ballot questions, we all know how advisory ballot questions sink or swim, to use the flood analogy. And that is, if you don't get somebody to come out and, and help people understand what they're voting on, they're always, everybody's always going to vote no if they don't understand. So, sometimes I wonder what the real strategy is doing those when you do nothing to help it. And then finally, for the record, I do think it's time that we fully fund the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, that we received so much fanfare for doing such an important response to a regional approach to housing. And it's not just regional, right? We know this. It's international now because of the fat cats and corporate, corporate universe who don't pay their employees a livable wage. And we have it right here, in, right here at our county. And $400,000 for a median home where the average wage is $12 an hour, something is really wrong going on in America. It's, it's sickening. So, I love where all of this is going. I love that the commission is taking this very seriously. And I think we should be telling the story, and I know you guys are nervous about raising a tax, I get it. But you know, you can tell the story, which is, and I'll help you tell the story as, as candidates. If we don't invest in what people have already put up the money for, vis-à-vis capital, we have no business collecting any taxes anymore. That is, that is just so irresponsible. And, and I really hope we can get there, but I, I agree, you know, let's see where all of our, what else do we have out there that we're not utilizing, and that we might be able to bring in-house and take care of and get rid of a whole staff, you know, flood, that, that I think has served its purpose. Considering, and I like what Commissioner Burke Bigler said, too. Listen, we make all these big plans, which I don't love doing. You guys know I, I don't love strategic retreats, because it always feels like we never really go, do what we say we're going to do. But I like what Commissioner Burke Bigler said. Yeah, but we have to be nimble. We might have said, we're going to do 25 libraries in 25 years, and then went, whoops, we can't even house people here. So, I just want to, you know, make the, the point. But absolutely, look at everything. And, and some of this is all, this is, I'm watching this movie over again, and I'm not a rerunner. But, and then let's do something that we can say, this is sustainable, this, we cannot live on grants alone, and we can't live on philanthropy. We know this. It doesn't work that way. We can't even budget that stuff. We can't live on the generosity of strangers, although we love our donations. We can't count on them to make any of our bills and any of our bond commitments. So, let's please develop sooner rather than later on our agenda, a robust, and I don't think we need a strategic planning meeting to enact some of these funding mechanisms. I'm happy to go. I'll be there. But, come on, you guys, let's not drag this on if you're not interested in, in really having solutions for a major deficit. That is actually the best deficit I've seen in a long time. So, I'm glad that it also scares the hell out of you, because we went through many nights, Mr. Solaro can attest to this. Ms. Cook was over at Department of Health. We didn't even know if we'd be able to pay, make payroll. We had staff doing four to five jobs. We had a very high rate of cancer incidents in our staff when we polled them, because of, you know, cancer obviously is related to stress to some extent. So, I would appreciate it, and I'm happy to carry the, the blame, too, for you, if we could enact some real solutions for your kids and your grandkids. I don't have any of those, but you know, that makes sense. And I, I think you have a different population of voters and constituents that wouldn't have a problem at all with this. And if they have a problem, send me in there, and I'll talk to them for you. I mean it. I'm happy to do it, because I think that us delaying, this is a very generational issue, I might point out, too. Delaying paying for something does no favor for anybody. You're kicking the can farther down the road. It's a bigger problem. Our jail is falling apart, because we never had a commission that had the fortitude and the foresight and the fiscal responsibility to say, let's fix this. And I might add, and I'm, and this is not in any way trying to put down anybody that's involved in the criminal justice system, but I will tell you, from juveniles all the way to grownups, most litigious population we have. And why not? What are they doing all day? Sitting around thinking who to sue. That's what I'd be doing, too. So, please, let me, and then I'm wrapping myself up, Mr. Chairman. Let me help you get there, too. I mean it. I really, I, I think, I'm tired of duct tape and baling wire. We are such a better county than this, and we have such, this is a better board than this, frankly. Much more thoughtful, much more progressive, much more brave, frankly. So, please, please look at this. This is scary, and it is dire. It's been worse, but I don't ever want anybody to ever get to this place again, as leaders or as employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. I have no other commissioners signed in. Mr. Solaro, I have you signed in before we do public comment. Did you want to wait until after public comment?
One item I'd like to put on the record and make sure we're, we were clear on the utility fund. So, the utility fund is broken down within, we have three different, so we've got the North Spanish Springs Detention Facility, that is one utility. We've got the reclaimed water utility and the sewer utility. Those are the three utilities that are broken down within that utility fund.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to make sure that there was clear that there are three separate utilities within that utility fund. The, the monies within those utilities are only utilized for those services. So, it is broken down that way. Just want to make sure that was on the record.
Okay. Commissioners, anyone else? All right. Thank you, Ms. Valetich. Madam Clerk, would you call public comment?
Yes, sir. We have Ms. Elise Weatherly signed in.
Ms. Weatherly. Elise Weatherly. First of all, what I wanted to say is, thank you. I noticed that you, you guys had said needs assessment. What I would, this is my two cents worth. I'm asking you guys to consider the fact that we don't want to spend so much money on lawbreakers, that those of us that follow the law and respect the law have to pay for it. I have been asked by many residents that have, own their own business, please, no act, no tax increases for the, for the taxpayers, okay? Please, let's just try to take what we've got. And I will say that this is about building operations, system, and maintenance, right? I appreciated what you had to say. When you look for a system, because I love systems, by the way, I took a little field trip down to Palo Alto to just stop by and say hi to Tesla, and go across the street and say hi to SAP, go down to Santa Cruz, say hi to a Walworth that reminded me of my ex-husband, only to find out that my brain surgeon lives down there, too. So, what I will say is, is the most important thing, I think, about systems is that they do communicate. If you've got one system that does one thing, and another system for another thing, you have to build interfaces to get them to communicate. That's effect, that's, that's ineffective, and that's expensive. So, I would ask that you focus in on system communication, integrity, integration, and if you don't have to do interfaces, that's just a wonderful thing. Now, I also know that SAP, Infineum has this incredible system for payroll, for GL, for accounts payable, for payable ledger, for all these different things. They communicate, and they communicate beautifully. While they're on the old AS400 ISI series, so that's just bad, right? We have to go to a GHR system where you click and stuff. Well, I disagree. With as many things as I've seen resurrected, I would like to ask the board to please consider looking into the Infineum system, because they are amazingly competent. The other thing I would like to say is, every time I go around this community, and I have been visiting communities, business communities, right? Help wanted. Well, I'm going, why don't we do a job there for the homeless? My daughter, by the way, the District Attorney's Office won. I wasn't, I'm not using my daughter as a pawn. I'm just taking a look to see, where is she really, right? She's brilliant. Does she want to work, or does she want the government to, to pay for everything? Well, she wants the government to pay for everything. So, I'm asking you guys, please, please exercise some discretion, some discernment. Don't let people just suck off the government. Let's have a budget that makes sense, and that does serve people that, you know, that are, that are supportive of it. We need accountability. We need responsibility. We need support for those that are actually trying to do what's right, to stop paying for people that don't want to do what's right. And also, I think that's it for me. Thanks, you guys, for listening, okay? A good system. We need good systems. Thanks.
Okay.
There's nobody else signed in.
Okay. Now, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. It says for possible action, but I think we've given staff plenty of direction, Commissioners. Okay? Okay. Madam Clerk, Mr. Solaro, I have you signed in again. I'm sorry. I beg your pardon.
Sorry. No, that's all right. I could have, could have done that earlier.
Name is just always up there.
Right. Board, I appreciate the, the discussion we've had today. Just wanted to make sure that, that it is, that it is very clear to everybody that's watching this. What we've provided to you today is the capital needs as we know them, based on master planning that we've done, and, and those types of things that we have been brought before you. This doesn't identify all of the needs that some of the other departments in their operating budgets are, are looking for in those types of things, service level increases, those types of things, affordable housing. We've had that discussion up here. This is simply really structured towards capital, because we've got the, the master plans done, and we're trying to get to that next step of how do we proceed with those master plans? We've got the, you know, the recommendations by our consultants and by our department heads. Our job now is to make sure that we prioritize the needs within those, those master plans, so that we can specifically go out and figure out how to fund them. That's, that's really the ask of, of this commission, is, you know, when we get to a workshop-style setting, that we prioritize some of those master plans. We've heard it at the dais that, you know, we've got, downtown is, is very important, because we've got, you know, opportunity zone funding potentials. I mean, there, there are other things. Certainly, there are, you know, you get calls, I'm sure, for libraries, and for, you know, jail expansions, and all those sorts of things. Those types of things, we, we just really need to, to work towards a, a process whereby we can get your prioritization, as well as the Capital Improvement Committee's prioritization based on risk and a few of those other things, so that we can sit down and really define, okay, to do the board's, you know, the, the prioritization steps, we need to come back to this board and say, you know, either we need to take a look at the infrastructure funding tax, and what does that look like? Or this supplemental GST? Or we look at other programs that maybe we don't want to be doing anymore, and take that operating funding. And there's a lot of different moving, this is going to be a tough discussion. It's going to be very difficult to move forward. But what we're, what we're trying to define for you is that strategic plan that we can cover. We all had that conversation around the strategic plan and how we tie our budget to the strategic plan. So, I just want to make sure that, that it was clear what we're, what we're trying to accomplish here, some education on what it is we've got out there. I don't want the public to, to go away thinking that we are in a, you know, fiscal catastrophe. We are very strong, and our policies have allowed us to continue to be strong fiscally. We have the money available to meet the operational needs of the county. So, that was, you know, proven out here today. There's even some, you know, some potential for some other funding available, but it's not enough to do the needs that have been identified within our master plans. And so, I don't want anybody to think that we are in, you know, in dire straits. We are in a good position. We simply, at this point, are trying to figure out how to afford the needs that have been identified through our process for capital to be able to continue to provide some services that our community is asking for. So, just want to make sure that was on the record. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Solaro. Okay. Item number 10, public comment.
Mr. Chair, item number 10 is your final public comment for today. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda.
We have Ms. Elise Weatherly signed in.
Thank you, Elise Weatherly. I just wanted to let you guys know that there is a rumor out there that Washoe County does have the highest tax rate of any county in the state. Whether that's true or false, I don't know, but I will say, this has all been about needs, right? Needs assessment. So, I'm just thanking you guys. I, I'm with you. If somebody knows that there's a potential to build a house in a flood area, I don't want to, I feel sorry for them, but I don't want to have to pay for it. I don't want to have to pay for the homeless and the indigent when I'm taking care of business, all right? Also, I will say that what I, what I need is, I need support, you know? You guys, it's like, I've got music out there on YouTube. I've got music out there in the airwaves. I've got the newberians.com website with blogs that talk about things that matter. I've got some things to offer, but I can't seem to get anybody to listen to me, which is frustrating, as you can well imagine. I like your idea about the tire tax. I mean, I would love to see Tesla just take over the nation, you know? Let them be the Tesla car nation, right? Because we do want to get away from gas, and we want to get away from pollutants and all that kind of stuff, but we do have to still do the taxes. So, I think that's a great idea. What I would love to see here is our school district, which I know is not you guys' area of expertise, focusing on the brilliant students. Stop applying a one-logic system to every student, because if you're sick, we're going to take, we're going to charge against your citizenship. So, if the parent doesn't bring the child to, yeah, never mind. It's not a Washoe County thing. Sorry about that. Anyway, I would love to see some schools here that focus more on the brilliant kids. We've got some brilliant ones here, but they're being ignored. TMCC High School, I'd like to bring a lawsuit against them, okay, for what they have done to the smart kids at Ace High School. We'll talk about that later. I will also say that, what was the other thing I was going to say? Sorry. Oh, when you talked about, sorry, I'm not supposed to point out people. Renown is funny. I called them the other day, because I have some issues with them, with being overdosed with chemo. Is there anybody that can help me, you know, fight my way through this? In the meantime, I had a personal issue with Colin Ross. Colin Ross is in charge of the Healing Ministry with that big baby grand piano. Well, Colin Ross wouldn't let my own mother play Christmas music on Christmas Day, because she just wasn't good enough for him. That ticked me off. So, I started kind of like showing up places. Well, all of a sudden, I was invited to a court case at the, at the Reno Courthouse, and who was on trial but Colin Ross? And he was charged with DUI. So, I called him up, and I says, is it logical for you to put somebody who can't even heal themselves in charge of a healing ministry for others? That makes no sense to me. If you've got an issue with drugs and alcohol, then you should probably stand back. And if Don Re was still alive, I like that man from the Gaylords, I would put somebody like him in charge. When I went to attack Colin, Don Re actually just took me out to breakfast. He knew how to call me. It was the coolest thing ever. So, I would just say, we need to have laws and stuff that makes sense. Thank you very much. Thanks.
There's nobody else signed in.
Okay. We will close public comment. Item number 11, Mr. Manager.
Words and Commission updates. Request for information on topics for future agendas.
Do you have any such items, Mr. Manager?
I do not, thank you.
Commissioner Burke Bigler, I have you sign in first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Manager, I, I asked for a, a list of all the county buildings that we own, properties we own downtown, and I got it, and it's huge. I was surprised, somewhat surprised, as large as it is. Why, why do we not have county branding on many of those buildings that we have, where we have county staff in them? So, so our insignia, our county insignia, I haven't seen it on any of those buildings down there. That's a cost that maybe we don't want to look at right now, but after the, after the conversation we just had. But I am curious why we don't identify those buildings as ours. The parking garage on Center Street, I think, is a good example. And so, I, I think we should look into that at some point in time. The other thing is, is that I, and I see Christine left, but I, I, I am becoming a tad weary of Incline Village representatives coming and telling us that the county takes more money than they give back, and we only give back 10 million out of the 30 million that we collect from them, or whatever the numbers are. I have no idea what the numbers are. But here's what I'd like to have. I would like to have a list of all of the services that we provide that are not, that are outside of that 10 million. So, for instance, I know the sheriff's deputies are not in that 10 million. I know the snowplow guys are not in that 10. What are, could I have a list of all of the services that we provide to Incline Village and Crystal Bay, and what their value is, so that I can provide that to them, so that they realize that they're, that this county is not simply ignoring them and not providing them with a return to, to what they've got? So, if you could do that for me, I would appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Herman, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I got two items, so it won't be long. In regards to affordable housing, we need to establish, have a description of exactly what affordable housing means. The gentleman that has spoken here at the, those meetings where we've discussed affordable housing funding, we had a little discussion the other day, and I said, what confuses me is the question, what is affordable housing? Now, some people, they think affordable housing, depending on the size of the house, but say a three-bedroom, two-bath house, 300,000 would be max. Other people say 400. What is that magic figure? Because there's got to be something on square footage, or something that talks to what it actually is, because it's just a vague thing now, and they want money, right? We want to give money. But how do we do it if we don't even know what it is? So, we've got to start from square one. I was listening to the radio this morning on the way to work, and our, our position on sanctuary cities and, and sanctuary counties is very questioned by the, the gentleman that was talking on-- cities and sanctuary counties is very questioned by the gentleman that was talking on the radio. I would like to have Sheriff Alom come in here at a very soon meeting and get that squared around, get that set, because we really need to know that. And he was mentioning about whether we respected the detainers and all that. And so I'd sure like our sheriff to come in and get that all squared with us and set us free from that responsibility. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Young, your next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree. Let's get an operational definition of what affordable housing is. There is a national standard, and I believe it's an algorithm based on CPI, the average wage, et cetera. But I think you're right, because I think other people will come in and say, well, I can't afford $300,000, so where's my money? Right? And how does that match up to what we consider affordable? Or I don't even know if that's the right word to use for it, even though that's our trust fund name, but you know, just what is it going to take to get people housed? So I agree with that. And branding, I do agree too. Why aren't those names on all of our buildings and all of our assets? And especially in a time, let's be honest, that people are looking at buying up properties. Shouldn't they know who to call when they want to buy a big building in downtown that's perfectly located for all kinds of goods and services? Shouldn't we have our name out there so they'll come to us and give us lots of money? This is the time to be a seller, not a buyer. So I agree. And I thought we had a branding committee a few years ago, but I guess it didn't get to that point. But I'm 100%, and it's worth every dollar, by the way, too, for wayfaring, just so people know where the hell they're at downtown, because that is also a whole other ball of wax. When it comes to how much taxpayers are investing versus how much their services is, yeah, guess what? This is the way, that's the cost you pay to live in a civil society. I live right near the downtown waste management dump. How come I pay the same amount to somebody that lives in McCarran, off of McCarron up in Collin Ranch pays? Huh, looks like I'm subsidizing them. Yeah, that's called a civil society. You don't get a dollar for dollar what you put in. And I might remind Incline Village how much they've cost us in the property tax suit that we couldn't even get people to settle for. Took it all the way. So we can throw that one up there too. I get what they're saying, but please don't ask dollar for dollar of your investment versus what you get back. That's called living in a civil society. Go live in it. What would you call that? A gated community. You pay for your own road, your own security, your own services. That's more dollar for dollar. This is called a democracy. And so we pay more, and we get different things as well. One thing that I did ask during the big dispute with the property tax revolt was, stop providing them snowplows. Well, that's against the law. We couldn't do that. Our liability was so big. But they were saying then as well, we pay so much money, and we don't get anything in return. I could just turn the snowplows out for 24 hours, and they'd be gone. I mean, they would be crying for us to please take their tax dollars. So I get it. I'm sorry that you have to deal with that, Commissioner, but I get it for my own citizens too, and it's just a reeducation. So, yeah, I agree with all the above, and let's get it going. If you need a vote here, let's agendize it as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Okay, on the final, talking about affordable housing, Mr. Solaro, one of the numbers that I would also like to know is, when will we reach critical mass where we've got enough housing to satisfy the demand? Because I think demand has a big, it plays a huge role in this. I mean, when you, right now, what's happening is demand is outpacing supply. And so, you know, and we've got all of these people who are saying, you can't build, you can't build, you can't build. But as we start to build more housing and you have more multifamily available especially, those things become, and that's what my wife and I used as an entry-level house. We used, you know, an apartment. That was our first, our first home was an apartment. And then we got together with another couple, and because it was not affordable, and we rented a house with four of us in that house. So, and then, and then my wife and I were able to get into a condo again, which is multifamily, and then we were able to rent a house, and then we were able to buy a house. So it was this stepping stone process, but there was, there was capacity in the market. That's, yeah, I'd really like to know what that number is. I mean, just even if it's an estimate. Okay, commissioners, anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Manager, do you have anything else? Commissioners, we're adjourned.